Here this afternoon. We're beginning to kind of wind down and get our arms around all that Thursday morning. We've come a long way. Once again, I just like to say I appreciate what every individual group that's here have done to help the Board of County Commissioners to look out for the well-being of our citizens and our visitors. And we appreciate you all very, very much. You all don't know how much. There's a quote in the Bible that says, if I had a thousand tongues, I couldn't thank my Lord and say Jesus is proud enough of what He's done for us. Well, I'm saying that now. If I had a thousand tongues, I could not thank each and every individual and organization here enough for what they have done for Lake City and Columbia County. We always want you to know that we really appreciate all the efforts and all the things that you've done here for Columbia County. But David, you have anything to add before I open this up?
Um, no, just my regular. Okay. So we've been, we really do appreciate everything you've done. We've been at this 24/7 for about a week now. So it's been very stressful. Before we get into too much, we want to talk a little bit about the thing that everyone's concerned about, which is declaration. We all know that the initial declaration did not include Columbia County, Swanee County, Hamilton County, Gilchrist County. That was not to be unexpected. It was the way FEMA does things. But we're not, not qualified. In other words, we're still eligible for assistance. We have to provide the documentation. And with that, I'm going to let Shane update you on where we stand on our disaster assessment from both the state task force and the local team.
Thank you, David. We had a team come over on Sunday from the state of Florida, the Division of Emergency Management, a rapid damage assessment team. They did their rapid survey on Sunday, took information back. I spoke with the Recovery Bureau at the division this morning. And they are very hopeful that we will be in a very good position without sending another team here to getting declared on the individual assistance threshold along with the public assistance threshold. We've already made that thanks to the co-op electric companies that we have. So it's not official yet, but we're in a very good position. Property Appraiser Hampton, he is still out in the field with his teams doing damage assessment as we speak. We added four participants from the building department this morning. They're out working with our teams out in the field. So we're continuing our internal damage assessment process. But hopefully things are looking favorable for us to get out of that declaration fairly soon. So.
So in addition, we have created a self-reporting mechanism. Todd and his staff have been working diligently to get it online. And if the board likes the idea, we will actually activate it right after this meeting. Post it on our webpage, send it out on Facebook, where you could actually self-report your damage. That then can be given to our damage assessment team so they can go out and know what they're looking for, where they're looking for it. And that's pretty much ready to go, right, Todd?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Um, so like I said, everybody's working diligently on the damage assessment. There is a lot of damage out there. And like I said, Jeff Hampton, we appreciate his assistance in really organizing it and coordinating with our building and zoning and building officials. So please, if you know anybody in the general public, encourage them to self-report so we don't miss them. That's the big thing is we don't really want to miss anybody. Does anybody have any question on damage assessment? Is that?
City manager?
Uh, city is done with all the cut and toss. We just have to start holding stuff away. And we're knee-deep in that right now.
Sheriff Department?
Yes, sir. We're still maintaining security at the open pod and assistance hand meeting that needs is necessary.
Lake City PD?
Our normal operations. We're still providing security at Richardson.
Okay. Power?
We're at normal operations, but we also today have assisted in some of the deliveries and pickups and moving around and stuff. It is significant.
Lake City, Lake City Fire Department?
We're at normal staff and had nothing to report since yesterday.
Okay. Health Department?
We still have our special needs shelter open at the Richardson Center in the cafeteria. We have four clients in there.
National Guard?
Hey, sir. We do have a recommendation. We're looking at the demand signal from all the pods. We would first like to thank the law enforcement officials for helping secure those pods for us. But we're looking, if we could, to maybe consolidate to one pod in Fort White. We have the capacity to support, to keep, continue to support that, or maybe a one or two, another pod site, depending on your approval, sir.
Kevin, I make that report last, sir. Electrical companies. Who's here today? I know I saw White Valley Electric.
Our goal was to get 95% more. Columbia County members on by 11:59 tonight. We passed that mark about 15 minutes ago. So we currently show 99 meters out, 2,131. We have crews still in the field the rest of the day. It'll happen tomorrow. So I'm sure we'll get everybody by then. I'm sure we'll get everybody back on that can safely set up.
White Valley Electric?
That was me.
Clay Electric. I know. I got to White Valley Electric here. Don't worry. All right, Clay Electric.
You gotta speak louder.
Troy Adams of Clay Electric. Just wanted to give an update on where we are, and I wanted to answer some questions. I told the Commissioner Ford on the phone today and told him I was going to find some about communication. He's been getting beat up about members of the co-op not getting good communication from us and things like that. So I went back, did some research and got all the different places that we're communicating with member currently. But the thing about communication is, it's two-way. What we put out, you've got the consuming, you've got to read it, and you've got to, and allow a little bit of patience that if the phones are backed up, allow us time to get your call when they're backed up in the queue. But just an update to where our numbers are currently. Right now, we have 6,000 still out in Columbia County. Still working on that. These are the, we're getting into those hardest-hit areas now. It's the most time-consuming to get restored. Right now, we're, had to adjust our prediction a little bit. We're going to be, we're looking at 90% of Columbia County by tomorrow night. And with the exception of Three Rivers, Wilson Springs. Been talking about that at every meeting. Right now, we hope to have, we're looking to have that 98% restored by Friday, or Friday afternoon at night. So that's a better projection than what we expected in those areas, Wilson Springs, Three Rivers. So that's moving that up, hopefully out of the weekend that we have them on by Friday. That has been, good news there is we're putting gears on right now in Three Rivers. It's just very tough rolling with the amount of damage there, as all the Fort White area. So just to discuss that with the, and the other thing about that, Electoral County, been talking about them too. We have as many resources there as we do here. We started pushing resources this morning over to Fort White to do that. We have 1,300 accounts still out in Electoral County. At the time we restore them, every asset we got, if there, will be pushed into Columbia County. So by tomorrow, we'll have close to 900 utility workers in Columbia County working on restoration. So we hope, maybe that'd improve that outlook or those ETRs, but we'll see. That's what we're hoping. We'll still feed them. We're doing about 3,000 meals a day with Rex Love feeding everybody. We're doing laundry. Laundry is pretty extensive now, once you get four to five days out. So we're taking care of all their needs, where they sleep and everything like that. So. So our communication, I just, I got with our Keystone, said, you know, help me remember all the ways that we communicate with our membership. Prior to the storm, Wednesday, September 25th, we sent out an email. We also, we email, text, and we also have an app, MyClayElectric app. If they sign up in that app, they get all the information that you'd see on Facebook and things like that are also in that app. So whether or not you're a Facebook member or anything like that, I'm not, I don't really do that, but you can go into that app and still get all this same communication. So we put that out there. With that, what we put out in that message, it had a checklist of things that you want to do prior to a major storm like we knew we had coming. We kind of set expectations in that email as well, or I say email. Through that communication, whatever medium you want to seek, was telling them to be prepared for an extended outage. You know, an extended outage, to me, extended outage, when I think of long-term, I was able to work the train as alignment. You know, we were there a month before we had some of the numbers that we have now on some of those. So I guess it depends on what your interpretation of extended outage is, what your expectations are. We put that out there, checklist, generator safety, how we go about the restoration efforts that I outlined here on Tuesday morning. And bringing out how that is, how we systematically have to do that. For safety reasons, we have to do that systematically. We just can't send guys up and down this line. You may get calls from members or ours that say, well, the lights are on right next to me, the lights are on over here. But those are different feeds, and we have different people on those feeds restoring that. So it's confusing to individuals on the field if they don't know. Probably that, you know, they see that, we have to, we can't just pull somebody or have somebody pull up to somebody in the field and talk to them and say, can you go put my lights off? As soon as they do, we lose track of them. And when you have eight, 900 people out in the field, that's when the safety becomes a very big concern. Because when we start pushing all those resources there in as well, now we got linemen and line crews on top of each other. So if any one of them is not in the place that they're supposed to be, we go energize the line, and we don't know they're down there, and they're actually down there doing something. But you know, that could result in a fatal. We don't want to get there right now. So far, we haven't had any injuries so far in this restoration effort and no major effects. Few accidents. We've had a few crushed trucks and trees from Friday and Thursday night. So we do have some damage, but none of that has been, anybody had to go to the hospital yet. So that's where we want to be. So just to outline our communication that we have out there. We have MyClayElectric app and a desktop. So there's different ways that you can get on that. Our call center, we have 238 phone lines incoming that we can talk to people on. Now, our average day, not storm days, we have 20 people manning those phones every day. When we go to storms like this, we add personnel to that so we can have more people accepting calls and being able to answer those questions. That's where that comes in. At 238 phone lines, if we have 1,000, 2,000 called waiting with, say, 50 people taking those calls, there's going to be a backlog of those calls. If you don't want to wait through that backlog, we tell them on the phone how long that's going to be. Your wait is this, just like any other thing that you've called, and they get you in a queue and do that. So when maybe you get heated, then they don't want to wait through that queue. They'll hang up and call back and then start back where they had to take off again. So it does require a little patience in these type of events right here. Members can call us, as you said there. They can contact us on clayelectric.com. It's another way to do it. That's data. We have people monitoring that daily. Members can message us through the app with some specific issues, and they can also send us photos. So if somebody has a tree down in their yard and it's got their service pin down on that app, they can go in there, they can take a picture of that, and they can send it directly to us. And we have people manning that as well. And they, we've been processing that, and then we transfer that into our app system. We email members directly. Members can message us through the app with those particular things on this outline. All Columbia County members with an email address with us, we can send them an email, we can text them, and y'all said, email, text, and the app, of course, yeah. So with that, we ask them through our thing, they can, we ask them to select a what, you want, you want to be phone call, do you want to email? Or do you want to text? About 70, 80% of the membership wants to text now. They really don't care about the other forms, but that seems to be the way to do. But you have to tell us that, and you have to sign up in there ahead of time to make sure we have accurate numbers. So we send those out with that, and we put out those ETRs that I just mentioned earlier. We just did that. At 1 o'clock, we updated that ETR where we stand right now. And I called back over there and asked them how many people had actually looked at that. We sent out, right out, about 8,000 emails and texts, all that, however they wanted to hear it, and only about 27% had even looked at it. So that's where I was saying, you know, the communication that we have, you put it out there, you got to ask each other. Then you'll get a phone call, and they'll be saying it or not, or not talking to them about when they're going to be restored, and the information has already been put out. Another question that has come up is about our, if you're on the app or you go to MyClayElectric, we've got an outage map on that. You can go into that outage map, and it tells you where we're working at, how we know different locations. But that map, we can only allow a public-facing site to drill in so far. Because then we get into issues of, if we allow anybody, because that is on, you can go to MyClayElectric and anybody can look at that, look at our outage. A lot of news mediums and things like that go to that to see where we stand as far as outages. If we allow that to be drilled in too deep, then somebody with maybe not the right reasons can go in there and drill down to an address, and they could see that somebody was out of power, and that's where people come in. You know, maybe try to break into somebody's stuff, or they try to, so we're not going to allow that to happen. And a lot of members have called and said, well, I can't drill in far enough. I can't see that I'm in the outage. We just can't allow that to happen. It wouldn't be, they definitely don't want us to be able to allow that kind of information to be put out about what's going on at their home. So that's why they're not allowed to go that far. We put numbers on there that are, this is how many we got in that area. Not necessarily right on top of where they are. So we try to keep that straight with them. Our social media and all that is updated continuously, just like we're trying to keep that out there. Those emails and all that, our website's updated, our IVR. Also, if you call in and you get our automated message, we're updating that message every few hours, standing at, just like that ETR that we'll put out on its text and email and that type of thing. So right now, another question that came up that Rock said he had filled out there was right now, our district office is open. We do have our lobby closed, and we do have our drive-through open. That's how we're taking any inquiries, any questions, anything like that. Past storms, past events similar to this, we found that if you open that lobby and you allow people to come in, you have to spend more resources to be able to accommodate the chaos that that creates. Because once we get into this many days, people are heated, they're willing to yell at somebody. So if they want to yell at us, they're going to have to come through the drive-through. I won't be happy to listen to every one of them. And as long as they want to wait in line there, we'll take everybody there, and we'll take every comment they got to say, and we'll research what they have until that line is empty. So that's the only way we do it. If we bring them in, then we have to bring in police officers. We have to bring in other aspects like that. Because not only will they be yelling at us, but they'll be yelling about each other whose powers are involved. We found that to be very disorienting in the office. So that's why we keep our lobby closed. So.
I just want to be clear.
Yeah.
So at 1 o'clock, you put an update out that you would be through, even in, I mean, in three urban states, Friday at 10.
Friday 10.
10:00 PM, Friday night.
Yeah, that's.
Now you're saying it's going to probably go to the weekend?
No. Friday, 10:00 PM. Before, we thought we'd be into the weekend. By now, we think it would be 98% complete by Friday night in those areas. Now, we still may have a over here, over there type thing to restore, but 98% of the people should be off.
So Friday at 10:00 PM is still a good time, Frank.
That's a good one. Yes. And if it changes, we'll probably put another one out tonight, we'll put another one out in the morning, and we'll keep putting them out until, you know, if we can bring that in closer, we'll do that. Yes.
Let me ask you. So like yesterday, we went from 10:00 tonight till 10:00 tomorrow night. If that changes, like you're saying, if all of a sudden you find out you're going to get done by 2:00 or 3:00, will we get an update that? When is your update? When do your updates come out on your website?
They're doing them every four hours.
So I know one come out at 12:30, so.
Because they look at, what I mentioned about how many members we have out in that particular area, and they update that as that changes. So it's about every four to five hours. They'll look at that. They'll send out an email to all of us out in the field. We can go, does this look accurate? And do all that, and we'll send back, yeah, that's where we are right now. So they try to, they try to scrutinize that a little bit before they get in there. Uh, let me see. So that's about it, other than our written publications, but that don't help us a whole lot at this time. But I'd like to mention that MyClayElectric app, if you're not one to use it's Facebook, or you don't look at all that, this, all this information goes through that app as well, and you can get a little more detail about.
If you, if you put up.
Yeah.
Your right-of-way, do you pick that up?
We don't. We don't have any way to pick that up. We'll cut it.
People ask me, are you going to pick it up out of the yard? And I said, I doubt that.
No, we don't have that. That's a tree. The only, the only tree we pick up is when we go through and we do systematic right-of-way cutting, and we're doing that, we're going through and cutting feeder lines, and we're doing all that. Anything we leave in that right-of-way, we pick up. Now, something falls out of somebody's yard or outside of that right-of-way, and it takes it out, we cut it and clear, get it back out of the way, but we don't pick up that.
Okay.
That's about it. Do you have anything on that?
Yeah, I'll get, I'm going to get with you after me. I got that question, but all right. Appreciate what you've done.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm here today. Wanted to just give you the update. On Monday, we were 99.7%. Monday, we're 99.7% restored. We still are working tickets. Some of the tickets that will, you know, kind of post-storm tickets that come in from other branch halls, other people's. But also working on having our crews go back to anybody who has been involved in this, is having a longer-term outage. So we have currently, according to Power Tracker, so our online portal for the public, we have 349 customers out. But please note that theory, so it changes if we're switching, or we're trying to make safe when we repair another part of the line. So if you have some variability in that, so you could see it, one five minutes, it might be 200, the next one it could be 450. It goes up a little bit as we're making lines safe for our workers to repair, make permanent repairs to some of the lines. If anybody has any questions, I'll be available afterwards. All of our customers have access to our app, where they can receive real-time ETRs, and those are adjusted. So I see maybe you don't have any questions, but we're still working. So I have crews out, and we will have crews out until our last hours is restored.
Anyone here from Duke?
Duke, I think it's under 15, so we put it again.
Comcast, you have anything to?
Sure. Hi, everybody. I'm Jim Boyett. I'm Government Affairs at Comcast. To update you, we're doing really well here. We're moving pretty quickly through it, but we do have 25 nodes still down. That's about 6,000 customers. But we're moving fast through it. It's also about the same as power. So we follow power. So as soon as power comes back out, we can come back online as well. And we're actively working on our fiber cuts and downlines to get them up before power comes back on, so that it's seamless, so they come up for the most part at the same time. As Carol said, we vary as well. Some go up and some go down because, you know, some boxes need to be reset, or there might be an actual drop down in the yard. Even though the service is back up, an individual house might be down, so our number's going to go up and down as well. That said, we did have an escalation on your schools. We managed to get the schools back online this morning. Or to be ready for this morning, as everybody went back to school, the one pine mound had a fiber cut that took us a little longer, but they should be back up by the end of the day today, if they're not back up already. So your schools are in good shape. We're working on your elections office. They should be back up. We're working on it now, but worst-case scenario is the third, but they are also working on that now. And also the Publix Works address, somebody gave me at Charmont Lane today. We're at that right now as well. So that's being worked on. We have 25 extra crew members here working on just Live Elk and Lake City for this area, because obviously we had outages throughout the state. So we've got a lot more extra people working on just Columbia County for you. And then the 911 line, I know we had issues with that, but that has been restored since 2:45, so you should be fine there. That's about it. I am here. If you need me, I have cards. Reach out anytime and happy to keep you updated as we go throughout the rest of this journey.
Red Cross?
I'm glad to be able to report today that what didn't happen yesterday happened today. I actually went out to Deep Creek, and I went by Richardson just to see for myself, just to see the place, to see what's there, what's going on. Deep Creek had 300 hot meals delivered today, and they have already had a refrigerator full of food that, or meals that could be heated back up along with plenty of water and plenty of MREs if needed, but they have hot meals. Richardson had plenty of MREs, but they didn't have a lot in the way of hot meals. We're going to see if we can divert some resources to Richardson, specifically to Richardson. Fort White, which you've heard electric people speak about being pretty hard hit, seems to be one of our most active communities. It had 300 meals delivered today. And a lady, May Dean, stopped by briefly with the Red Cross today, spoke with Carrie and I. And she had a herb, a food delivery truck dedicated to the Three Rivers Estate area. That's also, you know, been getting really bad. So I think we're moving in the right direction here.
You actually got food to Fort White yesterday afternoon about 6, about 5:30 some.
I heard it, something to get in, and it was a little late, but we're up and running today for sure.
Thank you for what you're getting done. I know it's a challenge.
We have a lady that contacted me through my call. And I've gotten contact with the Red Cross that wants to give 2,500 meals, but we're trying to figure out how to get them from Tallahassee here.
Pete working on that.
How many EMS?
Pete? Yeah, so at 8:00 this morning, we took over as your exclusive 911 provider in Columbia County. Really wasn't that difficult of a transition, because we've been doing it the last week, most of it the last week anyway. We have four full-time crews at the main station, which is Fairgrounds. We are going to wait to take over the south station that we have, because we are still working with the strike teams, and we want them to have a comfortable place to stay. So as soon as they're called off and they vacate the station on 18, we'll have a crew down there as well. All loads are kind of high, but for the most part, we are handling them, and the strike team does come in when we go level D road. But I think for the most part, we're able to, we're able to do it right now. So operations are going good, normal. I'm sure we'll have some, you know, roadblocks as we move into this, but nothing that will hinder operations as a whole.
Thank you. Anyone here for the food system? Anyone? Kevin?
Okay. Speaking of the volunteers and food meal, we've had a lot of receptions from people that are volunteering, several groups that have provided the hot meals throughout the county, from the north end to the south end. More importantly, now we're moving into the part where we're going to have to start repairing people's houses and helping people's houses. We have a volunteer group from the Rotarians that are working, and also the Church of Latter-day Saints is coming in Thursday and going to be setting up to begin this weekend. They're talking about bringing in 500 to 1,000 people. So if anybody has damage and needs help, even if it's just cutting trees, please log into their crisis, crisis.org website. What is it?
Crisis.org.
Crisis.org website, and login, crisiscleanup.org.
Yeah, yeah.
And login. Like I said, 500 to 1,000 people, a lot of people from around the country coming down here to help us out. We appreciate it.
It's on my Facebook page, and I thank everybody else, too.
Good afternoon. We're going to be talking about a few things that we have not talked yet because it's party at the paces. When we started the campaign, we had roughly 500-plus areas of concern on the public side. Yesterday, I told you, we had 65. Yesterday, I told you, we had 65 locations in power lines. Please turn out today, with the exception of 17 locations with power lines, we have cut and tossed public, private, the whole nine yards, with the exception of 17 locations still have power lines in. We are on our second day of final cleanup and it's going extremely weightful with the challenge. Already, we look behind us, there's a lot we've been down the road. Okay? So I would encourage our citizens to get it out there as fast as they can, so inefficient on back and forth. Okay. So 17 locations period, since our people get in my way, we get those. Good job, guys. Once again, two times today, I asked contractors, quit putting stuff around, right? Stress that, everybody, stress that. County residents, county residents only.
Sure.
Yes, sir.
You heard Kevin saying with being.
It's constant, yes, sir.
How can? We, we have not by this board did a resolution to take care of that and find people for doing it. I need something for Thursday night to fit that. You're already good, you already got it.
I spent this afternoon writing the demand letter, one of our most egregious violators. Uh, it's an outfit called Classio's or Daytona. They're not hauling anything. They're telling people straight to their face, FEMA is going to get this and your landfill, by the way, is closed. Kevin, is landfill closed? Now, landfill's never been closed. So I've got these guys and I've got constituents who they've lied to. I've sent them a demand, told them they have a period of time to clean this up, otherwise I'm going to refer, uh, code enforcement for $5 a day per violation. I'm going to refer the second degree misdemeanor to law enforcement and I'm going to prepare civil action to sue for any damages incurred by the county for the recovery of those materials. Given an opportunity to fix it, don't expect they will, it's a one-year-old company. Uh, actually had a constituent tell me they were bragging they made a $100,000 commitment. So, so that's one. And, and I articulated to them exactly what the violation was. Any other vendors that y'all hear about, contractors, I know Commissioner Murphy, you had ones, please provide me that information. They get the exact same letter. As soon as the dust settles and we know what this costs us, we'll file civil action. But we are going to come for these people because they are taking advantage of our constituents, they're charging outrageous prices, and then they're only doing half the work. They're leaving us to do the other half and taxpayer department pays for that.
While we were talking about that, I got something saying, um, so we know crisis cleanup and we know the Rotarians are coming in, that they're working for free.
That's right.
There's going to probably be a lot more out by the right away that they're going to be cut, people charged and putting them.
Right.
So we just, we, we want to make sure we know that they're not a contractor.
Right.
Correct. And I think, Commissioner, I think they've got something, tie something on.
We're talking more profit outfits that are charging. Again, just two weeks ago, I had a bunch of tree work done, a bunch of tree work, $2,000 and they hauled it all away. My neighbor had one tree cut down, $3,000 and that tree is sitting across the street from her house.
Costs just as much, it, it's more, it's.
It, it, tons more they're charging and they're doing half the work because they're not bringing the truck, they're not hauling it away.
But Joe, I want to.
They're just leaving us to pay.
I want to ask something. I have some victims that were actually, and the owner of the entire property, they have houses on his property, that had several insurance companies get claims, they sent contractors. I'm going to get that information for those, because that's a slam dunk. And they told them the exact same thing. They told them stories that it didn't even matter because they didn't have any trucks to haul anything when they got there. And this is insurance company. So I'll get all those, I'll get those stuff.
Hey, they, these folks come over here with their chainsaws and their ladders and every inch, leaving that stuff on the side of the road. They tell people who do ask, not everybody asks, what are you going to do with all this stuff? They assume the same.
I had the same in that industry.
They lie to their friends.
I'll be giving you the, the name.
Just give me a list, I'll send out the demand letters, we'll give them an opportunity to cure it before the end of state emergency, but when the state emergency ends and we end up holding the bag of ass, Kevin's going to work, you got to come up with numbers, and I'm going to file civil action on everyone.
Okay. Chair, if I may, real quick, talking with Joe and many, many others, Robbie had a situation, uh, we kind of helped each other with this morning. Simply enough, Joe, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, but my plan that we were just talking to Joe is we need to form a registration, just simple registration. So, and I, and I'm not, we got a long ways ahead of us on this, but my point is, we, this Thursday, when we have our meeting, I've asked David to try to act like we walk, not act like, we're going to walk some for discussion. But my point is, if this board in a public held meeting has an opportunity to say, okay, we're going to start registration as of Friday. So when, uh, Katina sends her officers out there and they pull up, hey, do y'all have a registration number? No? Uh, okay, call this number, I'll be back in 30 minutes if you don't, you know, I'm just using the scenario here. But Joe, it's not unrealistic to think that we could possibly go down this road on this, this event because, uh, go to three, I spent the morning in Three Rivers, I was there five Thursdays, it's unbelievable. I mean, ours is bad, but it's like Ron said the other day, it's, uh, it doesn't matter where you turn the head, it's, 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 it's bad.
Country club, even the country club, it's.
I'm sure we're, we're under state of emergency, statute does allow for an emergency ordinance procedure. If that's the pleasure of the board, I'll go work on it for nine.
Yeah.
Bring something on Thursday, but to assure you, Commissioner Williams, I already have a plan for the ones that have already stepped on us.
Okay. And I, and I believe that when they find out about this, the good contractors, they're going to be our report.
We're, we're letting them know and giving them an opportunity, I want that to be real clear, Todd, you put that in the paper. They're going to have an opportunity to fix it before we do anything.
Okay.
They're going to get a clean opportunity, hey, maybe you didn't know you were supposed to clean this stuff up, but guess what? They're, they're, they're violating our code, it's very simple.
Okay. Thank you, Kevin, you did a good job.
As it relates to landfill, reiterate, all constituents have the opportunity seven days to dispose their organic debris at the landfill, seven days a week for free, our contract. So as soon as we had safe weather, the landfill was open, we allow that opportunity for your constituents. The landfill is not closed.
Yeah.
Okay. Speaking of landfill, garbage is going well, we're running one day behind, everything goes well. We will capture the final behind day on Saturday. Okay. What's changed? We said we started on public infrastructure, cut and tossed it, private, private roads, I'll clean it. Now we're having an opportunity to evaluate what we have wrong, sports buildings, parks, things of that nature. Probably the most significant thing I want to get out to Todd, his group. Fort White complex, we're coming off it. Yeah, Blue Church, roof, metal roof off. Library Fort White, trees down, South Side complex. Fitz is down at Red, Blue and White Field, north of 200 grand worth of pit open. Girl fields outside of, uh, Waterfalls, it's broken. Or vocal, falling creek, it's a lot of structural damage, I'm going to land a rebuild on that and brutality. And our interstate billboard, those are the significant areas of damage. So that tells us it's going to be a hot minute before we play sports around here again. We've got fences, roofs down. So that's the biggest thing I want to get out to the public. It is what it is, we got to prepare. So that concludes the operational side of things, we're moving on to logistics. Are there any questions? The guys are doing great, want to echo the entire company, not that anybody hurt yet, hopefully ever, but it's going real good. This is more as good as we want to. And I want to echo Mr. Williams' comments, thank everybody in this room and others, even our private folks out there, our citizens. I thank every foretrapper, committee, county officials, okay? So thanks for all that operational stuff. You have any questions? We'll move on to logistics. Okay. You have eight folks that are still like behind your shelters. One in Deep Creek, two in Fort White, uh, four specialty and one general at Richardson. All locations have plenty of ice, MREs and water, okay? So we'll keep that going, y'all have plenty of supplies, okay? We can curve with our partners at National Guard, me and David and I. And we want to take and centralize all of our energy at Fort White. We're talking about pods now. That's where your hot spot is, okay? Fort White is still needy, they're, they're, they're doing it, plan's working. You know, as we were shipping all this ice and all, we recognize, we think we're good. Our friends over in Taylor, our neighbors in Taylor County, you know, 80% of their structure, I was told, we're going so hard, we diverted two loads of ice and they didn't stop there, they needed it, okay? So we're asking this board, or recommend strongly. I don't need a vote, I think, look at everybody's eyes. We need Fort White, National Guard, our resources, Martinez, let's centralize our resources. Let's knock this out, let's take all the rest of our energy, finish cleaning up the county, okay? Don't give me that.
Were we still setting up at the, uh, ball fields, Fort White?
Yeah, yeah, community center, yeah.
And so that, you know.
And, and the shower is all right, the library.
Right, yeah.
They're, they're right across the road.
Right, right. So let's take and focus our, all of our energy towards the pods there, centralize everything. Let's take all of our other resources, put it, other things we can do, give it back.
Let me clarify one thing too, that Tim asked now. Eminem food store, food mart, used to be Pope store down in Three Rivers. I diverted a load of ice down there today, got the job. Crawford, Steve Crawford. And, uh, they're also, uh, Red Cross and what's the organization that, that you've got for us? They're, they're, they're hanging out meal gunner too, so.
Versi Chef, Versi Chef.
No, that is a different group.
But if we could get, we might need some, uh, we might need some guards at both places, if that's possible.
We got a fringe, they, they got their unit, but we definitely.
And Carrie and Lisa and our friends at the health department are kind of coordinating all these volunteer.
It's, it's bakery revival, sir, yes. So we, I'm going to tell you, a lot of people have stepped up to help people for wild hot meals. And I sure appreciate it, cause like I say, from Columbia City South, about everybody's out of power, and I'm talking about all the way to the west side of my, my district. You know, I've got a lot of people. They need to give, yes, it's like. You just said, hey, you'll be. I forgot.
We're doing good. And I would recommend, you've got a board meeting at 9:30 on Thursday. I would recommend at this point, gang, we're repeating, oh, incredible, please.
Taking the recommendation, uh, from, from Mr. Kirby, uh, we will not have a meeting tomorrow. Uh, we have a 9:30 meeting at the school complex office, uh, on Thursday at 9:30. Uh, we will, uh, meet there to discuss, uh, overview of where we are and whether we need, uh, need for another mass meeting like we have now. We'll make that decision on Thursday morning. So it would be at the School Board Administration Building at 9:30 on, uh, Thursday morning.
It would be televised. Yes. Well, let them know that. It will be televised, I think Kerry will watch it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You want, right, may that, may that, I know.
And that, uh, that meeting is televised. All meetings, our, our Board of County Commissioners complex, those are live televised meetings, so, uh, your public will have, uh, access to the, uh, to what board decides at that day. Uh, Kirby, uh, in, I talked with 20 Valley Electric after the meeting. Uh, we're getting close on the north end, uh, of our district and, uh, it might be in a day or two that we could shut down Deep Creek and move those resources, uh, where they need to go on the town.
You refer to the shelter?
To everything. If everybody get the light, I got one person in shelter. But according to 20 Valley Electric, a day or two, I'll have everything on that north end done. So I won't need a shelter open then.
Okay, a shelter.
Right.
Yes, sir.
Or the bathroom.
Okay, huh? Okay, let's, let's pack up then, a second. Well, we're recommending what the National Guard, those resources in other geographical areas in Florida and other places, they're having deployed some of their folks from different places. We're talking about as of tonight, shutting every pod down with the exception of Fort White.
No, 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 I can't do that till I get the people in Deep Creek with power back on campus. I can't leave those people out there without power. In no place.
Well, you, you will lie in National Guard.
But I, I'll be fine.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah.
This is always contained, will you be able to help the deep breed?
Yes, sir, we've got staff stationed.
Okay, so that gets a little.
I thought I understood him to say that he had 99% of everybody at home power.
Okay. No, no.
You've got 99 meters still left out.
99 meters left.
Oh, 99 meters left, okay, yeah.
So, um, if, if you give me the names of people, addresses in the shelters, we can look up, keep track of us there and maybe we can get them.
I can.
Get them all, see if we can get the shelters down.
And all those families are in the Deep Creek area, that's where you're at.
Yeah.
I'm not familiar with what you call Deep Creek. Um, I can show you.
I, I.
I'm sorry, I can show you the map.
I was thinking your Deep Creek area in Fort White would probably be the last.
It will be, yeah, it would be the last.
I'll show you the map that I.
Yes.
We're, I'll, I'll show you the map that I kind of figured out before the meeting, now there's a lot less now.
Okay, I'll look at it.
Yeah. I'll get it after the meeting, yeah.
Okay, anyone else have anything to add? Anyone? Not seeing anyone, uh, we'll close our meeting out and we'll see those that would like to come first into the Board of County Commissioners meeting, we'll see you there. Once again, we appreciate everything that everyone has done against Columbia County and Hurricanee. Yes.
We got an update on Nick.
I don't think we ended up there.
There's not a lot of update, Commissioner, at this point, it's still, uh, in the formation process. The Hurricane Center still hasn't labeled as an official storm yet, but if anything changes between now and Thursday, if it does, I'll be at Thursday's, maybe to update you then, if that's all right.
That's good, thank you.
Okay, thank you, everybody.
There you go.